Okay, so good morning. I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting of May 26, 2016 to order. Let the record ensure all the commissioners are here. We have a vacancy, I guess, in District 5. So with that, would you join me with a salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any agenda changes this morning?
No.
Okay, no agenda changes. Next is our public comment period. If there's someone with us this morning that would like to address the Planning Commission on a land use item that's not on our agenda, this would be your opportunity.
Joe Kelly, I think the last time I was here, maybe it was the last time I watched. Mr. Allred made a comment publicly that he was being pressured about his vote, and I was wondering if that's still happening and if you did anything about it.
I don't recall saying that.
You don't?
Pressured about my vote on a particular issue?
Yes, sir. It was on the marijuana issue.
I've never been pressured. I've heard from a few other people like that.
You made comment about it that you did feel it, and I was either here or I watched it publicly.
This is a public comment period if you'd like to address the Planning Commission, but we're really not obligated to respond, Mr. Kelly.
I realize that. I realize that because I just wanted to tell him because of what he said, the following Board of Supervisors meeting, I went and made public comment about it, asking them to look into it, to stop it if it is happening. You folks should not be pressured. You have your own brain, your own abilities.
I'm the one person that doesn't need to be pressured.
No, that's true.
You don't need to respond?
No.
No.
So, anyway, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then we'll move on to the consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes from May 12, 2016. Are there any revisions, corrections?
No.
Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the minutes of May 12.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then I'll abstain since I wasn't here. Thank you. Next up is a Planning Commission review and recommendation to the Board of Supervisors on the general plan update. It's the continuation of the safety element from May 12, and in addition, we'll also be reviewing the glossary today. So I will open it up to the commission as far as how you want to proceed with this, if there are... I know that we've all received the amended safety element with the comments that were made from your previous meeting, our previous meeting, which I wasn't there, but I have read it.
I had... go ahead.
Well, I have a number of suggestions and questions, but I don't have any until we get to page 10.
Okay.
On page S2, I had that we were going to insert the word "the," and I kept reading it last night trying to re-figure that out, but in the second sentence, the Calaveras County Office of Emergency Services, it said, "Associate floods, hazards, hazardous materials using standardized emergency." We were supposed to enter the word "the" in there?
I did. I just didn't underline it.
You did and didn't underline it? Where did I see it?
And "the" national incident?
And the National Incident Management System.
So it's there. It's just not underlined.
Third line down.
Okay, got it. Okay. You went all the way to page 10?
I did.
On page S5, okay, that 2010 was correct. On the top of S7, portions of the county, and that one's correct, too. I was looking at the 2010s, making sure they were caught, but that's a reference to that sentence. And I go to page 10 as well. 1.2, but I'll let you go first.
Go ahead because I don't have anything till 1.3.
Okay. I had a note on S10 on 1.2 about health and safety being a priority. Were we going to make an adjustment on that? Did you have a note on that for me?
I didn't have a note on that.
Well, all I wrote was, it said, "Health and safety is priority," and I don't know why we made that notation. So it wasn't a big deal. I was just questioning it. And then on 1.6, it looks like we struck. We were going to check on 1.6, and it looks like we just struck it, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then on the numbering, will the numbering be correct?
Yeah, the numbering. I just kept the numbering the same so that when we referred back and forth between the prior version and the current draft, at the end, when I'm done, I'll renumber everything to correlate the revised numbers.
I'm back on 1.3 on page 10. I think there's a word missing. Ensure that discretionary actions involving new development will not result in a reduction. Establish thresholds. The word "below" should follow the word "reduction." And on S1.4, I would add a comma after the word "areas." Prior to approving new development and identified hazardous areas, comma, evaluate the public costs, et cetera. And that's all I have on page 10. And I don't have anything more until page 11, S2.4. This came up as an issue at the last meeting. There was a suggestion to reorder the sentence, which has been done, but as a matter of substance, the question was raised regarding the prohibition of land divisions creating lots unless the lots contain a building envelope outside of the dam failure inundation zone. And I think it was said that the maps that depict these dam failure inundation zones are confidential. And so we don't know exactly what areas are included, but I think it's safe to say it would be considerable if you're talking of major dams such as New Maloney's or Pardee or Comanche.
Right.
And so what this effectively does is prohibit lot splits within those areas such that there could be a residence unless the residence would be outside of the dam inundation zone, which in some cases it probably could not be. And I think I made, raised the example on the shores of Lake Tullock. If Maloney's goes, obviously everything around Tullock goes. And so if you want to do a lot split on the shores of Lake Tullock, you couldn't do it unless the lot extended way up the hill. And I think that thought was expressed, that people should be allowed to do this if they want to take the risk that something like New Maloney's is going to be blown up or otherwise fail, and the risk probably being extremely slight with these major dams. And on top of that, there are already all kinds of people living in a zone which for sure would be flooded if something like Maloney's failed downstream. And so it seemed like we were prohibiting something here against a very low risk of something happening. And I just didn't see a good reason for doing that, but I'd like to hear why the planning department thinks that this should be done, if that's your view.
I would agree that the probability of, you know, the dam failure on any newer dams are probably relatively low, probably extremely low. The likelihood of New Maloney's failing is, I don't know what the percentage would be, but it'd certainly be very low. I've checked other county policies, and, you know, many had very similar policies with this, in this regard, and it seemed like a prudent thing to do. I think that there may be some modification that would be acceptable that would allow some land division. I'd be concerned about some higher density subdivision occurring in an area like that, but, you know, certainly larger lot splits probably, you know, we're... it's a risk assessment. And, you know, I guess it's a policy column part of the Planning Commission, whether or not you think that the risk is great enough that new land divisions, the potential for more lots. I mean, someone who has a lot now can build on it. There's no prohibition on building on an existing legal lot. It would be the creation of new lots. If you're inclined to strike that portion, I would leave the high occupancy structure prohibition, hospitals, schools, those kinds of things, even though, again, the risk is low. I just don't think we want to allow any risk for something like that. So other counties have not made similar prohibitions, so there's no requirement that we do that. I guess just erring on the side of caution.
Well, I have no problem including the no new high occupancy structures, but when I think about it, not just Maloney's, New Hogan's another example. I mean, if it goes, there's people downstream. We're going to be flooded the way it is.
When you talk about the difference between high occupancy or high density, should the word "high density" be added, or is that going to be all incorporated in? Because the high density, to me, would be, okay, we're going to put a subdivision in. High occupancy could be a multiple to multiple.
Yeah. And I think high occupancy structure is defined in the glossary. I need to double check that. Yes. So high occupancy structure is identified in the glossary. Structure is capable of being occupied by a large number of persons at any one time. Examples include schools, theaters, healthcare facilities, hotels, apartments, and large stores.
So it doesn't include subdivisions?
So it doesn't include subdivisions.
So high density should be added?
That's an option. Do you think that's appropriate?
I think that would be all right. I think the likelihood of high density subdivisions downstream of these dams is pretty remote, just given the way the terrain happens to lie.
Right.
It's going to be one or two, or a few scattered. So what would be your suggestion for wording, Mr. Maher?
We could add high density between creating lots, or land divisions creating high density lots unless the lots contain a building envelope. So we still have that ability that if there are a portion of a large piece of property that's within the DFI, but the rest of it could be out, we could still allow some development to occur.
I think that's acceptable.
So what is, what exact language you're going to put in there?
I'm just going to stick...
Maybe read the whole thing.
Yeah. Within the dam failure inundation zone, there shall be no new high occupancy structures or land divisions creating high density lots. And maybe that would be... okay, I think. Unless the lots contain a building envelope outside the DFI.
And then you would want to make a corresponding change with the program S-2F, I would assume.
Yes. So high density would be inserted after "new," between "new residential," so new high density building sites.
I don't have anything else until page 14.
stricken.
This was stricken at the action by the commission. This is already a requirement of state law, and we, the feeling was it wasn't necessary to reiterate what's already part of state law.
Okay. And S4.2?
That one was already covered in substance, and I think the land use element.
I think you're right. Looking back to my notes to see why that was...
Yeah, that's why we did that, because it was already covered under...
Yeah.
It was a duplication.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, if we're up to page 14, I'm looking at S-1B, level of service. And there's something missing here because the last phrase, "necessary to provide services to the new development," doesn't have any reference. And the first part of that provision doesn't say anything about new development. If you go to the corresponding provision that I think was in the public facilities and services element, it had an additional phrase that went like this, "In consultation with emergency responders and other stakeholders, comma," and the other phrase was, "that provides services to new development," and then it went on. So that would be one way to make the provision make more sense.
So you added "S" to services and removed "the"?
You could actually do it another way by taking the word "the" before "the new development" and adding the word "a," so it would read in consultation...
Oh, I see. Okay.
See what I mean?
Uh huh.
Either way...
Either way works.
It would make, it worked. So whatever commission was to do, I don't care.
Just add the word "a."
Maybe simply just to correct "the."
Yeah. Okay.
So that should be, "necessary to provide services to a new development."
Correct. I think that makes it work. Nothing else until I get to 16. We already dealt with S-2F, and I did have a question about S-3B, but maybe somebody had something earlier.
Well, we already added "the." Okay, so what page did you go to?
16.
16.
Okay.
Okay. We already dealt with S-2F.
Right.
Yes.
And on S-3B, the second sentence says, "Amend the code and design manual as may be necessary to conform to state law." The next sentence says, "Include provisions for defensible space exceptions and so forth," with no modification. I think I would add the phrase, "if necessary, comma, include provisions," because otherwise it's a standalone sentence that doesn't seem to be consistent with the preceding sentence.
Or could you also say, you know, "conform to state law," including or which may include provisions for defensible space exceptions?
Combine that into a single sentence.
You could do it that way.
Yeah.
What was the exact language for it?
Well, you could say, "which may include," or just "including."
Yeah, I think just "including."
Including.
So, "state law, comma, including provisions for defensible space." I like that.
Okay.
I don't have anything else until page 24.
Did anyone else have anything before that?
Well, I just had a...
Please, sir.
I'm good till 24 also.
Oh, I just had a question on 23 about the hillside management guidelines. Was that covered in another element, or?
Yes.
Yes.
Land use.
Okay.
So we're getting behind it.
All right. Kelly?
Okay. S-5B says, "Review development projects proposed on sites known or likely to be contaminated by hazardous materials and/or that are identified in local, state, or federal databases as likely contain hazardous materials," and then it goes on. The first phrase, "known or likely," the "or likely" gives me trouble because there aren't any standards there, you know, likely according to whom. And it contemplates a category of sites that are likely to be contaminated that are not identified in a local, state, or federal database as likely contain hazardous materials. Otherwise, it would be superfluous. And so we have a phrase that there are no standards governing it, and we know it is divorced from any of these databases. It's something different.
And the reason why, and I talked to the Environmental Health Department or Environmental Management Agency about the language here, and there could be, I mean, there are known sites, and then there are sites that aren't on any list, but because of past practices it was on the site, there could be. And so that would be something we want to look at as a part of the review of a development proposal. That, let's say it was an old gas station, you know, are there underground storage tanks that might have leaked or something like that? Or is it an area that is within the natural occurring asbestos area or something like that that could have? We don't know that it does. And, you know, what this is saying is that we're going to review development to make sure that if there's a potential, you know, that it's, it's something that's checked out as a part of our review process.
How complete are these databases, local, state, and federal, at identifying the sorts of sites that you just described?
Well, they're as complete as is known. So where we know that there is some potential hazard, then that's on the list. But we don't, you know, if we don't know it's there, then it's not on the list. But as someone comes in with a proposal, we do a little more specific look at that site, may go back to past history, what was there before, and if we find that there was, I don't know, an old mine site or something, or, you know, there were so many old mine processing sites back in the day that aren't on any list. And if you go to the site and you sort of see the physical evidence that, oh, this site was pretty extensively mined back in the 1800s, it's not on any list, you know, let's do a little more research to find out, is there something we need to be concerned about so that we're not putting people at risk? That's the point of that. So it's purposefully vague so that it's not just, well, it's not on the list, so it doesn't matter. It provides the opportunity for us to make sure that, you know, if we're putting people in harm's way, that, you know, they're going to remediate them before we do that, or we don't put people in harm's way, I guess.
Do these databases identify sites that are likely to contain hazardous materials or just known to? Because the phrase is "as likely to contain," which led me to believe there were databases that showed sites that are likely to contain hazardous material.
Well, there could be, for example, a database that shows all of the underground storage tanks. We don't know that they leaked, but, you know, the vast majority of them have over time. But there could be a site that had an underground storage tank that didn't leak, and so it's not contaminated. But it's likely to be because of the preponderance of these old storage tanks to rust out and leak.
If I look at one of these databases, does it have one column that says "known sites," another one that says "likely sites"?
No, no. It will have a list of whatever the categories are that pose the potential hazard. Underground storage tanks, processing of some chemical, whatever it might have been, and I'm not familiar with the specifics of it. But underground storage tanks was an example that was provided to me by the Environmental Management Agency as, you know, why "likely" is used in that, in that phrase, because we don't know for sure that it leaked. If likely to have leaked because of, you know, the vast majority of them all end up leaking over time.
I can give you some examples of just in manufacturing or commercial properties that you would have never thought that something contaminated that property. And when we are making a sales and we do a Phase 1 report, it looks at the likely history of what was on that property in past years. And then if there was something that could have contaminated the soil, and you go to the Phase 2 aspect of that, you will be surprised at what we have discovered out there on these lands, and the purchases never go through, or hazard mitigation has to happen. So even though it's not on a list, I know that what he is talking about exists. In places you would have never anticipated, just in the middle of a subdivision, there's a little building, and there were gas tanks in the ground from years, years ago. It was not a gas station, but they used it for a small business and put fuel tanks in the ground. And it's right smack in the middle of a subdivision. When they went to go and do the test, they discovered these tanks were there, and they had been leaking. So the likelihood of something like that happening, just in looking at a Phase 1 and seeing what the history of that property use was, tells us a lot. Now, it doesn't mean that the property is contaminated, but looking at the history of it and saying it could potentially be, and then looking one step further. I mean, I know of two sites right now that are definitely contaminated, and I wouldn't want a subdivision put on that property, not without hazard mitigation being done.
And these are sites that don't show up on a database?
They're sites that are not on a database because it was just a private business that once upon a time existed there back in the day whenever they didn't have containment units. They didn't have, it was just, you know, a single wall, little tank in the ground, or it was used as a site that collected hazardous material at one point in time, and those, the ground is definitely contaminated to this day, even though it was years and years ago that it happened.
I think the "likely" is an important safeguard. There's also, I mean, you know, illegal dumping. There's all kinds of, you know, there's dry cleaning with the solvents and all kinds of things, but I think it's a, I think "likely" is an important safeguard because not all lists are inclusive.
They're not on a database, and they do exist. And I don't think there's anything wrong with if you're a developer and you're going to develop this property, taking that one extra step to make sure it's safeguarded. I don't have an issue with that.
No, I'm convinced. Because I wasn't sure how extensive these databases were, and it now appears that they're not, you can't really rely on them as being inclusive.
They're not all inclusive.
Okay.
Other comments? Other comments?
I don't have anything else on the safety element.
I don't either. So are there members of the public that would like to address the planning commission on the safety element? The, and the revisions we've just discussed?
Excuse me, is it going to be over the whole thing, or just what you discussed?
Over the entire safety element, yeah.
Joe Kelly from the abandoned area of District One.
I'll just remind you, Mr. Kelly, we have five minutes. Thank you.
I'm going to be talking primarily about S one through S four. You brought up a lot of subjects within that realm in what you were speaking to, going over your paperwork. This is a picture, actually a FEMA map that was done. The county does have a copy of this. This is Nassau Creek and the flooding of Nassau Creek. This is Maxwell Creek to the west of it. What this map from FEMA does not show, and I bring that up because FEMA failed to do its job 100%, is that water travels over, when it fills up here, backs up, goes over, and goes across towards Maxwell Creek. And there is a house right in there. Twenty twelve, third wave storm, it flooded up to their garage door, took out their driveway. So this document, I don't believe, does enough about flooding. Because for, what, 10, 11 years now, I've been irritating government to include county government, state government, and federal government over the flooding caused by Nassau Creek. So within this document, I do not see, so there is no public health, safety, and general welfare discussion of major flood hazard, namely Nassau Creek. Shouldn't a safety element include such a discussion? What is flood protection in Calaveras County? Define it in relationship to public health, safety, and general welfare of the citizenry. Now, I'm going to jump off of this, stay on this, but it's another issue I have. Is this hearing to additionally comply with Government Code Section 65302 regarding conservation and safety element? Meaning it's something that's supposed to be done every year since 2010, when we adopted our housing element, and we have not done it on an annual basis. So we're still behind the eight ball. Now, going back, under the introduction, it says that natural hazards in Calaveras County. Well, how about unnatural hazards? Because that's what creates the problem on Nassau Creek, is an unnatural hazard. It was created by man. Which, by the way, fish and game warden, what, chased down one of the gentlemen, because the others are dead, but chased down one gentleman, he admitted to doing it without permits. Then the biological side came in, looked at it, and I guess they decided, oh, it's just too good to tear it up and put it back to its natural order. So this thing was also done, although the county can't find it, I can document, except for four years. But I can document it pretty well when it was done, by purchase of property by the fellow who has admitted doing the damage. And that was after SEQA and the Clean Water Act were put in place in California. So I'm wondering why government doesn't go back and do its job, even though it's 30, 30 years plus old. So what? The state's coming in now and looking at ponds, flying over, and going to be going after people on ponds. So does floodwaters under overview now, issues, hazard, potential safety issues? Does floodwaters crossing over a 1970s era parcel map road restricting sheriff, fire, ambulance, basic first responders, and property owners ingress and egress meet the challenges of identification as a flood hazard? On page S two talks about the responsibility of implementing emergency EOS or EOE plan through efforts of the Calaveras County Sheriff's Department. That's fine and dandy. That's where it used to be until this butte fire thing. Now we have the board chair involved in it. And we should stay back with the sheriff's department. At the time, it was Clay Hawkins. He was out and about with whoever was necessary for him to take with him. And then he reported every Tuesday or every time that the board wanted him to report on it. It was a well-organized, well-oiled machine. It seemed to appear by everything I've read on past history. Flood hazards in that, on S two, background setting flood hazards, talks about damaged roads, private property. Yet it's still, I just pointed out, the government does nothing about it. Cal Fire's been out and looked at it and said, would you take a fire truck across that, looking at this way the flooding was going through? No, I wouldn't. The other thing I want to show you-
Mr. Kelly, you've got a minute left.
Thank you. The other one, thing I wanted to show you was, this is December 2012, third wave storm. This is my backyard, where it's flowing from south to north. And then it goes across my property. My property's on this side. It goes across to the west. And this is its continuance over the property I pointed out on FEMA's map. So does that construe to be a flood problem? Should it be covered under the flood and flood hazard ordinance we have in this county? I was here when that was brought up and being addressed. And I tried to do everything I could to get things in. But as you may well know, county's very resistive to a whole lot of, resistant to a whole lot of information being applied.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay. I'll bring it back to the commission. Is there anyone who has comments regarding Mr. Kelly's comments? It seems like we've got some, we're addressing flooding in S two point one to two point four.
No, I don't.
Okay. Is there any to go through the revisions? Would you want Peter to go through the revisions? No? All right. So should we just make a, is there a motion to adopt this, recommend adoption, moving the safety element forward?
So moved.
It's been moved?
Same.
Moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So next is the glossary.
So the glossary is, you know, a basic tool. And the position that I try to use, although, you know, in some cases it doesn't always apply, is that you should only define those things that can't, that aren't defined somewhere else. You know, that are terms that are used specifically within the general plan that are unique to that document. We could define, we could have 100 pages of terminology we could define in here. But the glossary is put together was intended to just sort of focus on those terms, how they were used in this general plan, if different from either common usage or definitions somewhere else. There are some things in here that are probably not necessary. And, you know, we could either strike those, or it probably doesn't really hurt to leave them in there. But, you know, we start getting too deep into defining every single term that's used in the general plan. We're just sort of recreating the wheel on definitions. So with that, I'll turn over the glossary to you.
Any comments, questions, suggestions? I was just wondering why the act default was 11,000 years.
Plus or minus.
Plus or minus.
Plus or minus, I mean, but what, 11,000? I mean, we have records back that far.
Well, I, in fact, I'm not sure where that definition came from. There is probably-
Seems a little odd.
A geologic reason that that is, you know, the breaking point of, you know, anything more recent than that is considered active. And geologic time is very-
Well, yeah, that's like a, yeah, that's a heartbeat, yeah.
So.
We'll get to you, Richard, thank you. Under benefit basin, discrete? What's discrete about it?
It's-
It's got a boundary.
Definite boundaries, that, yeah.
Well-defined.
Well-defined.
Right. Sounds secretive to me. I'm like, why does it have to be discrete? It's a geographical area.
I think the term discrete is using to describe the geographical area in that it is clearly defined. It's not discrete as being, you know, someone's being discreet about what they're saying.
It's a secret.
It's not, it's a secret, yeah. Discrete has several different meanings.
Okay. I had a question on-
We could say clearly defined geographic area, if that, you know, if discrete is, but discrete is used in that manner.
I didn't have a lot of issues with this.
I had a suggestion on clustered development slash clustering. Where it talks about in closer proximity, or are, with the purpose of retaining, couldn't it also be for the purpose of creating? An open space retaining or creating? Or do you think retaining captures both?
Well, to create it, that means there was, you'd have to take something out that was already there.
I would agree with that. I don't think you're really creating. You've got open space now, it's undeveloped land. And rather than partial out the whole thing, you're saying-
You're just retaining a portion of it.
Clustered over here, or leave it there. The only thought on that, as I look at that, it could be other reasons, not just open space. Although I probably, I mean.
Well, if you defined it broadly, open space could be as used for a number of uses.
Right. Could be agricultural open space, it could be agricultural open space.
Right, right.
In general terms. Maybe undeveloped is, but then it could be developed as agriculture, so.
I don't have a way with the- I think I'm good with that, yeah.
Can we back up to the very first one, 100-year flood? Says, "A shorthand expression for a flood that has a 1 in 100 chance of being exceeded in any given year." I don't understand that floods are exceeded. I think they happen. Why doesn't it just say a shorthand expression for a flood that has a 1 in 100, 1 in 100 chance of happening in any given year?
I think that being exceeded is referring to the chance, not the flood. But I think that striking that is fine. Chance, what was the word?
Just happening. You're talking about the flood, a flood that has a 1 in 100 chance, I would say, of happening.
Works for me. I think that being exceeded is probably something that comes out of the FEMA statutes, but typical federal gobbledygook.
Well, if you were going to change it, then you'd need to change it on the last part, too, of the 200-year flood. Anything else?
Yes. Just a typo, "A waiting," needs a period at the end.
Where?
Oh, at the end of the sentence, "A waiting."
And then "biological resource." Defined as all vertebrate and invertebrate animal species, and all plants and habitats occupied by these species. First of all, doesn't vertebrate and invertebrate cover all animal species? Why do we need, why don't you say all animal species? What else is there?
I guess it was to clarify that it's not just four-legged creatures. It could be, you know, other, you know, animals, insects, spiders, worms.
Okay, well, that was the next question. I don't take animals as including insects. And, you know, you could have-
But they are in the animal kingdom.
Okay.
I was going to get the, why it's put in there was because, so that it's clear it's not just mammals. That they're all other kinds of animals that are, you know, fish are animals.
Fish are animals?
In the, in the, in the biological hierarchy of, you've got plants, living things, plants and animals.
Peter's something.
Yes, fish are animals in the biological sense.
He's confused with mammals, mammals and-
Well, I think this glossary ought to be written with phraseology that's more familiar to normal people, and not just biologists. And I would never have thought fish were animals. Why don't we just say all animal? Fish and insect species. But I have another issue with this, too. Because it talks about it being biological resource, which sounds like a good thing. Something that one would not want to disturb, something that one would want to preserve. What about things like star thistle? Medusa head, Italian thistle? Non-native plants that are most assuredly not a resource? Under, I think, almost anybody's definition. So these are, they're being included, I take it as a resource by this definition. And that doesn't seem to make sense to me. Because I think where this comes up is in various provisions of the general plan that talk about protecting these things.
As I recall, I'm just looking it up now, when we talk about the biological resources, I think we qualify that as two important biological resources.
And protected. We talk about some of those other, like the ones you just mentioned as being not favorable.
Can, can we add as classified as?
So where the term biological resources used in policy COS 3.2, avoid impacts of special status and sensitive biological resources. So biological resources means everything. But then we qualified it in our policies by saying, these are important ones. I think we have other policies that say we don't want to have, you know, quagga mussels and star thistle and those other kinds of undesirable biological. I think the term resources has the connotation, you're right, that it is important. You know, resource, you know, economic resources, those kinds of things.
But we've provided clarification in what a resource is, basically. Productive resources. We've talked a lot about that.
Yeah, 3.1 says, "New developments shall use site planning techniques, including buffers, setbacks, and encouraging clustering of development to protect sensitive biological resources." So we've used sensitive or special status. Those are the only two that I see that actually use the term biological resource. There may be others. I could do a word search and to see if the others come up. But I could play with that definition to be less technical, more layman's terms. And then when I bring this back, we could talk, you know, see if there's, maybe it's not necessary. But I think that we use the term biological resource in the policy. And so what does that really mean? It's qualified in the policy.
Okay, I understand that. I do think the way it's worded, though, it wouldn't include fish, to my way of thinking. If we could just make it a little more explicit, so that it's more consistent with normal usage instead of- normal usage instead of the way experts use the term, I think it would be better.
Okay.
All right, Peter will work on that. Anything else?
Not on that page. On page two, we do have a reference to density transfer that I'm not sure is being used anymore, but I suppose it doesn't hurt to leave it in, because maybe at some point the phrase would come back in.
I don't know that we took it completely out, did we?
I don't remember.
Okay.
If we took it out, there's no sense in having it in there.
And I don't recall, I mean, there was a lot of discussion about it, and the fact that it's not used very frequently, but I don't know that we completely took it out. So.
I, I would say if it's not in, it's surplus and maybe a bit misleading, and so is-
Peter will word search it, is that correct?
If it's in, we'll obviously leave it in. And I don't have anything else until page three. Ephemeral stream slash drainage. A drainage that exists only during and for a short time after precipitation and channels located above the groundwater table. I'm trouble, trouble understanding this, because a drainage, as I understand, it always exists, that's the ground. What doesn't always exist is the stream.
I think I would strike the word drainage from there.
Just say ephemeral stream, and then say a stream exists. And then down on fire code, the International Fire Code, comma, also known as the California Fire Code, parentheses, current edition, end parentheses, and then it goes on. Is the quotation mark in the right place at the, at the end of Title 24 of the California Code of, Code or Regulations? Or should it be after California Fire Code?
I'm assuming it's in the right location, but I'll double check on that.
Because it doesn't, it doesn't look like something that would be-
That-
That lengthy.
Right.
On the fire plan, I would strike the comma after CAL fires, in between strategic fire plan.
Striking what? I'm sorry.
It says, for purposes of the general plan, references to the quote, fire plan under CAL fires, comma, strategic fire plan. I don't think you need the comma.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yes. I thought you were talking about striking the words after that.
I know, that's why I thought I was, like, it wasn't sure either.
And on flooding, this is a very broad definition, it is, A, rise in the level of a water body, or the rapid accumulation runoff, including related mudslides and land subsistence, resulting in a temporary inundation of land that is usually dry. But, you know, under that definition, I suppose any ephemeral stream is a flood. And while rivers and streams do rise and fall with normal snow melt, normal precipitation, and nobody would call that a flood. So I'm guessing this definition comes from someplace else, and maybe it's not possible to come up with a better one, but it does seem to be really broad.
Is that, is that a legitimate use of the word dry after usually? After it rains, it's not dry, but it's not flooded either.
I question whether we actually need to have the, I mean, flooding is defined in many other areas, and we specifically have, you know, definition of flooding in our county code and in the flood, flood prevention ordinance. I think, you know, do we need, is, is there confusion over what flooding means, that we need to define it here? I think it's one of those, maybe it's unnecessary at this point.
I think you're right.
I'm all right with that.
Delete it.
I have nothing else until I get to incompatible land use, parentheses, mining and parentheses on page four. And I'm just having trouble making sense of it. It says, land use is inherently incompatible with mining and/or that require public or private investment in structures, land improvements, landscaping, and other uses that may prevent mining because of the greater economic value of the land and its improvements. And there's all sorts of land uses that require some investment in a structure or land improvement or landscaping. And I don't understand why, how, how those investments may prevent mining. And the phrase, because of the greater economic value of the land and its improvements, doesn't seem to answer that question, at least to me.
That is a little odd, I guess I find that, well, I mean, you could just say land use is inherently incompatible with mining, examples include, and just get rid of the whole investment business.
I think that would be better.
Say that again, Vaughn, where are you cutting?
Well, just land use is inherently incompatible with mining, examples of such uses may include-
Okay, got it.
But just get rid of the whole investment portion of it.
I suspect that that language probably comes from, maybe the Surface Mining Reclamation Act, or some other, either state law, or it might have been something that was originally in, in one of the earlier drafts of the resource production element. The intent would be that where you have, you know, mining operations or mineral resources that we want to protect the ability to extract those resources in the future, that we don't want to have improvements or investment in land around it that then makes it so, so, people's homes, businesses, that would be disrupted by that mining activity, becomes incompatible. So I, I would agree that it's probably-
I think that takes care of it with the examples, though.
Yeah.
Those are all pretty intensive investment types of uses.
So you're suggesting that we strike after land use is inherently compatible with mining?
Period.
Period, and then the rest of that sentence goes?
Right.
Okay, on page five, noise contour, second sentence, C N E L and L D N are the metrics uses to describe the noise level, et cetera.
Used?
Should uses be used?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. On page six, repetitive loss structure, a building covered by a contract for flood insurance that has incurred flood-related damages on two occasions during a 10-year period, ending on the date of the event for which the second claim is make, et cetera, should be made. Scour critical bridge. I do remember we had a reference to scour critical bridges, but it came out.
That's correct.
It is correct.
And does this show up anyplace else?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, if we take it out, then I don't have to worry about trying to fix some of the problems on it. And the only other one I had was that, it's a parallel question on transfer of development rights, whether that's still in. And I don't have anything else on the glossary.
Okay.
Anyone else?
No.
All right, anyone in public would like to provide some comments on the glossary? Now's your time. Again, a reminder, we've got five minutes.
Darn. Colleen Platt at myvalleysprings.com. I did have a lot of little things I'd like to go over, be patient with me. Okay, on page one, basically on all the pages, there's, I counted 17 definitions of noise terminology, noise and sound-related terminology. And some of them are sort of technical, you know, C N E L, decibel dB, and they're scattered throughout, and going through these and trying to understand them, I kept having to go back and forth and back and forth to one or the other, one kind of referred to a term in the other, and it made it really difficult to understand, because I don't understand noise that well, so I was trying to understand these terms. I was wondering if it would be possible or helpful to have all of these noise definitions, noise-sound definitions, in one section, you know, noise and sound terms, and then have all these 17 different little things, because they relate to each other and they refer to each other in their descriptions. We've got like, for example, on page one, you have ambient noise, you have awating. On page two, you have community noise equivalent level, CNL. You have day-night average sound, LDN. You have decibel DBL. Equivalent, page three, equivalent sound level, LEG. Page four, you've got four more terms. Page five, you've got three more terms. What I'm saying, they're just sort of all scattered, and most people wouldn't know what they mean as a single term without, it'd be helpful to have them organized by, if you're looking up under a glossary, what are these noise and sound definitions? You'd more likely look under noise and sound than you would under LDB and CDLs. Anyway, I had a hard time understanding it, so that was just a suggestion for organization there. My second comment on page one is, and the cluster development, is this mentioned in the general plan under residential specifically, because cluster development can also refer to business and commercial clustering? So I wondered if it might be helpful just to clarify that that is referring to clustered residential development. And then, as you did discuss earlier, at the end of the last sentence, it says, with the purpose of retaining an open space area, and that open space area would be for use as open space recreation or agriculture. So it's not just to retain for open spaces, open space for use as open space recreation or agriculture, and that might help people to understand what that, the purpose of clustering there is. That was just a suggestion there. Page two, under critical habitat, I didn't really find a definition under that. It says it's an area designated as critical habitat, but it still doesn't tell me what that is. It says it's designated by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife for, by these different groups pursuant to this and that, but it doesn't define the term or give a source for a definition of the term that I could see. So that would be helpful. And then on page four, going back to the level of service, I've had a problem with that definition for years, because I keep hearing different definitions of level of service from different agencies, depending on who's defining it and what part of the general plan it is. And I, I think that's a pretty good attempt to define it, but it's confusing, and I'm, is this a subjective or an objective measurement? Is this something that, it says first it's qualitative, and then at the end it says, but it also depends on if there's long delays and free flow conditions? So I'm just having a hard time on the, on that level of service definition, and wondered if you could maybe go over it a little bit more and explain it, because I, I'm not sure I understand that. And then, page five, on population density, and that also actually refers, or should refer back to page one, building intensity, because they're kind of two sides of the same coin. It talks about population density being the number of people in the area, not the dwelling units of an area. But population density is the result of building intensity times the residential numbers of dwellings, so it seems like those two definitions should refer to each other, because they are related to each other. I'm not explaining this very well. So population density, we understand, is the number of people, not the number of units, and that's a quantifiable standard. But it also is related to the number of residents per dwelling unit and the number of dwelling units per acre, as it says, or later, so I'm, it just seems like the two things should be tied closer to each other, so people decide, understand that one is dependent on the other, that there is a formula, you know, that population density is related to building intensity plus the residential's per dwelling.
Do you have any more, Colleen?
Pardon me?
Do you have many more?
One.
Okay.
One more? Okay, page six, on sensitive noise receptor. In parentheses, it says sensitive receptor, and if you're implying that a sensitive noise receptor is the same as a sensitive receptor, I don't think that's correct, as sensitive receptors are usually for health purposes and air quality, not noise. And, you know, in, in referring environmental documents to sensitive receptors, you're, you're talking about pesticides and people that are sensitive to pollutants and toxic chemicals and, and that sort of thing. So I didn't think that was appropriate, to put that as being the same. That was my comment, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so let's go back and look at some of the, Colleen's comments. I understand about the 17 definitions for noise, and, but if we put it in a separate section, then we'd almost have to categorize everything else in the glossary, that would be my concern. And having it alphabetized, someone could, you know, they can, it's obvious it's alphabetized, but if they went through and they were looking at alphabetized and this was in a different section, it might get lost, I don't know, I, what are your?
I, I think what would be maybe helpful would be to take those 17 definitions and attach them, right to the noise element itself, which is where it's used, and leave this glossary the way it is. So anybody's reading-
We could just put a note at the top that says, for noise terms, see noise element, and then we could attach that.
You could have it both places.
Both places, he's suggesting.
But if you had it stuck at the end of the noise element itself, which is where it's used, I think exclusively.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, I mean, it's only like a page. Yeah, yeah, because that would cover both of them. I think that's a good idea. All right, Colleen's other, cluster, oh, oh, clustered development clustering is, Colleen's comment was that it should be clarified that it's residential, but does it always have to be residential? Couldn't you have a, could you have a commercial or industrial clustering?
The dwelling is a residence.
Yes, I know, but she's saying it's like, right, we should specify that it's, I mean, but couldn't you? I don't know, hadn't really thought of it.
Or is it, is that a commercial clustering?
I mean, we usually don't look at density with non-residential, and that's where it's usually, I suppose-
But what if you had a mixed use?
Well, that would still be, I suppose, the residential component being clustered.
That you'd be clustering.
We could put, and structures, so that- We could put, "And structures," so that if, you know, development in which a number of dwelling units and/or structures are placed in closer proximity. So, I suppose you could have, if you have, well, if we have a coverage requirement for commercial, you know, you can only cover thirty percent of the lot, say, but you want to have, for the same reason, maybe you put more intensity in a certain part of the property, but that would still be the same, same coverage requirement. I've never really used or heard of the term clustering used in respect to commercial development. Because again, it's usually, you've got a certain amount of area that's allowed for development, or a certain, you know, certain percentage of the lot that can be covered, and however you manage that, it's just meeting the standard.
So, then would it make sense to put residential in the definition?
We could do that.
For dwelling units, I think what you were saying, Lisa, is it's already covered by the fact that we're seeing dwelling units, that it is residential.
Well, a dwelling would cover your mixed use that you're talking about versus residential. I think it's fine.
Yeah, I think so, too.
There was another suggestion by Ms. Platt to add some language at the end, so I think it would read something like, "For retaining an area as open space, recreation, or agriculture." Which does that affect?
And I'm fine with that.
Which I think would be better.
You know, giving two other examples. We talked about that.
I think retaining an open space area makes it broader. If you start trying to define it, then you're going to have to define everything.
But then also, it does give people an indication of the intent, that it's not just open space. It could be productive use, or it doesn't have to be passive. It could be agriculture, it could be recreation. Just, I think provides a little more, you know, information for the reader.
So, what exactly would we want to do with this?
Well, just say, "For the purpose of retaining an open space area for use."
Just an area as open space.
Could be two ways, an open space, recreation, or agricultural area.
That's good, that works.
The only problem with that, if there was some other reason, we might be clustering a...
That's right. It sounds like that's the only things. Those are the only...
Or we could add something at the end that says, "For, you know, retaining open space area for use as recreation, agriculture..."
Or other non-developed use or something.
Yeah.
Or not developed, but other...
Conservation, recreation, agricultural, or other use.
Or you could even just, "Open space area," and you could do like an I-E, agriculture, you know, for example.
Yeah, maybe that's a...
Right, for example, so it's...
So, we're not limiting yet.
Right, we're just giving them a little more information about how we're defining kind of open space it could be.
E-G.
E-G, sure.
So, be an open space area, E-G, recreation.
Right.
For recreation or agricultural purposes.
Right, just recreation, ag.
How about conservation?
Conservation, sure. So, Colleen's other comment was on critical habitat, that her feeling wasn't really defined, that it wasn't defined? That we're referring to a definition by U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service?
Well, the problem with trying to do...
So, we're referring to the designation, not the definition. So, where we refer to critical habitat, we're saying, these are the areas that are specifically designated by one of these agencies.
So, should we say designated critical habitat?
Areas formerly designated as critical habitat by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, et cetera.
It's hard to define it any better than that, because they can, their criteria for defining critical habitat and designating it change over time.
Right.
And to try to capture that in anything that resembles reality would be very difficult.
I would agree.
Critical habitat is whatever they want it to be, basically.
And what we're saying, we're not going to create our own definition for critical habitat. We're going to rely on those agencies to determine where that is. So, I understand where, you know, you're sort of defining the term by using the same term, but what we're actually trying to say in this is that critical habitat as used in this general plan means those areas designated by the agencies as critical habitat. So, it's intended...
Is there a way to reference, where do you find that, and whose agencies?
It's all kinds of places.
Couldn't you just like go with...
All kinds of places.
I mean, I...
Where to look?
Yeah. The Congressional Record. Seriously, that's where you would find it.
Well, I think it shows up in the Federal Register.
Federal Register, I guess that's what it is, Federal Register. And it could also be, so we're saying all the federal agencies, but not states, and there are states listed, but I guess the State Fish and Wildlife, Department of Fish and Wildlife, critical habitat is a federal designation, so it only applies to, so, so do you want to add in the Federal Register at the end of this?
Good.
Because that's where it comes from, that's where you'd look for it.
It doesn't matter to me, sure. The other comment by Colleen was the definition of level of service. That it was qualitative measure, but then had some quantitative aspects to it, or...
Well, I think she made the point, it's hard to understand, which I think is true, but the problem I have is I have no way to fix it.
I always thought that level of service was at the intersections.
It's both intersection and road segment.
Yeah, okay. I mean, it's a...
It's a qualitative measure that utilizes quantitative criteria, but it really is the, it's the field from the driver's perspective, which is qualitative.
I think we've had a discussion in the past that it, that it is really geared more to suburban or urban conditions, because it has to do with the delays that you encounter. And you can have a road such as Sheep Ranch to Avery's, that doesn't have any delays associated with it, but it's really quite a terrible road.
Yep.
And there actually is criteria for rural road level service. Much harder to calculate, actually, by the way, it's easier to calculate, but it's harder to understand in the terminology of traffic. You get stuck behind one slow-moving vehicle on a narrow, twisty road, and that is, that affects level of service. You can't drive the normal speed limit that you're expecting to drive, and, which is one of the reasons that level of service is being phased out as a metric in many cases, particularly for environmental review. It's not environmental impact, it's a driver's comfort impact. And so, so all environmental review is going to what's called VMT, vehicle miles traveled. And that's a whole different story, but...
So, I'm looking at the definition here, and then you pull it up on the Internet, and LOS is used to analyze highways by categorizing traffic flow and assigning quality levels of traffic based on performance measure like speed, density, et cetera. I mean, you could...
Would you like me to play with this? When we could, we have a couple other edits we'll need to make, so I'll need to bring this back, and if there's, I'll look up what other definitions there might be. I'm sure this was drawn from someone's definition, the Traffic Design Manual or something like that, that Highway Design Manual terminology, and I'll check with public works to see if we have a clearer definition.
That'd be good.
I don't know that we do.
Right.
Or it'll just be another definition that is equally muddled.
Yeah.
But I'll play with that one.
The next one is on population density, in that it should be linked in some way or referenced to the building, it was, I don't know if it was building density or building intensity.
Well, there is a reference already with building density.
Near bottom page five.
That tells you it's not the same as population density. So, there is a cross-reference there, going one direction.
Right.
I don't know that we need to say the same thing again in population density.
It's not synonymous. Any feelings about that? No?
Would it be helpful to add a definition of density? Density comma residential, and just sort of to have that cross-reference? And, okay, we're talking about dwelling units. I think what, what I think I heard Colleen saying was that, you know, there's, the reference that population density is talking about the people, but there's really nothing that says that when we talk about density in the general plan, we're typically talking about
I don't know.
I don't either. Well, if you've got something, you could throw in there.
It would be useful to add something.
We could review it when we come back.
Okay.
And I think the last one Colleen had was on sensitive noise receptor, and sensitive receptors are two different things.
I think she's right. I think we can probably just strike the parts that said in parentheses, so we're just talking about noise.
Okay.
What are you striking?
Sensitive receptor in parentheses.
Okay, good.
All right, and that's it. Any other comments on the glossary? Is there a motion to...
Well, I think I'll be bringing this back.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, we're coming back with this. Okay, thank you, thank you, getting ahead of myself.
So, speaking of which...
Yes?
Next up are community plans.
Next up are community plans.
We've gone through all the elements. Thank you. And...
Well, this is historic. We've gone through the elements.
So, the, next up would be the community plans. I've been working with various community groups on coming up with those, and we should have something ready for June 9th.
June 9th, okay.
Is that the next meeting?
That would be our next regularly scheduled meeting.
All right, any other, before we get to public comment?
As far as the general plan, so, June 9th...
Well, we are getting ahead to your report before the...
Oh, okay. Well, I just, we're on the general plan, so I was just thinking, discussing...
Sure.
I'll be out the following regular meeting, so we'll pick up where we left off with community plans on the, I guess, the first meeting of July, unless we want to hold any special meetings in between those dates. I'll be gone from the 14th to the 27th.
So, the, are regularly scheduled first meeting in July, or the first Thursday in July?
However you want to do it. Or we could, we could reschedule a meeting for the Thursday, last Thursday of...
Which would be July 30th.
July 30th, which would be a fifth Thursday, I guess, in that month. So, we normally wouldn't have a meeting that day, but we certainly could do that.
I'd like to see us do that, just because I'd like to see us really get through this. We have a lot of work on those land use maps ahead of us.
That was my thought as well, and if you guys, if your schedule works for you, that we could...
July 30th?
June 30th.
June 30th.
June 30th, sorry.
Mayor may not be able to be here, I don't know.
Okay. We can see how we're doing on the 9th, but just sort of keep that open if possible.
Okay.
And if not, then maybe we go to the first Thursday, which would be, I believe, the...
7th.
Of July.
The 7th of July, okay.
Okay. Well, I'm probably good for the 30th, so...
Okay. So, when we come back on the 9th...
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Next is a public comment period. If there's anyone with us today that would like to address the planning commission on the land use item, not on our agenda, now would be your chance. No? No? Okay. Well, with that, I guess, we're adjourned. Yeah. We're adjourned, you can have a long break.
A two-week break.
Two-week break. Thank you very much.